I got a red.
That's good.
I got a red light.
I got a red light. Alright, we'll call this meeting to order at six fifteen. Has everybody taken a chance to look over our minutes from our last meeting? If so, do I hear a motion? That was our September twenty-fifth meeting.
I don't have those minutes, Mr. Chairman.
You have a copy?
Here we go. I think I got one. I got one here.
Wait a minute, maybe I do. I do. Pardon me, pardon me.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Alright, got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor. Okay, go down to number three, financial report, Mr. Carl.
Yeah, and the DDA account, we've paid out some bills. The roof payment, the second and third payment, I guess that's the last payment, isn't it?
No, we have one more.
One more payment, okay. So we've made the second and third payment totaling about twelve thousand dollars. And we've got thirty-eight thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars in the account still. And we have yet to draw on the line of credit from the city, so.
We hadn't got a bill for the signage yet either, right?
Nothing's been taken out for the signage out of the DDA account.
Okay, that's right, we're on the wrong account.
Just the roofing and the consultant for the roofs, the only thing's been paid recently.
Any question from Carl? Move on down to number four, downtown development. Old Business, is that yours, Mr. Christopher?
Yes, sir. I got three things under Old Business. The first is update on the Welcome Center. Speaking of the roof contract, we are, for the most part, they're done with the work. The last payment won't be dispersed until we get certificate of warranty from the manufacturer. The manufacturer has to issue that after they're satisfied that the roof has been installed properly. Then they'll issue a warranty. They won't receive their final payment until we receive that from the company, the manufacturing company. So we're just waiting for that. How to put this nicely? Sometimes when you go, bidding stuff out doesn't necessarily get you the desired outcome. So we've had to do a lot of rework on stuff that just wasn't satisfactory. So that's one of the reasons why it's taken a little bit longer than we had anticipated. Definitely having Chip Ward there helped out a lot. So making sure that stuff got done correctly. So since we're at a point now of closure for that, it's time to move on to the rest of the building. We're actually probably sixty days behind where I would wanted to be at this point, but we were waiting. The staff knew that we were planning on hiring an engineer before the council and the public. That was kind of what we had talked about and then, you know, we talked to the council about it. We hired an engineer. So we were waiting because we thought that we would be able to get some help from the engineer on this project. And he and I met and it's not necessarily in his willhouse or expertise. So then we reached back out to Rickman, who was the architect that did the original work for us, and talked to him about it. And he has a, basically what we need is a mechanical engineer to do bid specs, like what size HVAC system we need, you know, what plumbing, where does plumbing need to be? Electrical demands that's going to be on the building. So he has someone that can work with him to do the bid specs for all the rest of the work. So in other words, we would put out a bid for the HVAC system based on their specs, that we received the bids for that. Basically, we're doing the same exact thing we did on the roof for all the other components that need to be done on the building. And so I think this is a more, it's a more work for us this way, but it will save us more money in the long run as opposed to hiring a general contractor is going to put some type of fee on top of that. So I think this is the best route for us to go to get it where it will come in with the most economically advantage for us, so. And we've done work with Rickman before and he's pretty good at what he does. So, you know, I feel comfortable with the price that he gave us to do the rest of the work of the thirty-five hundred dollars.
That's thirty-five hundred to put together the bid specs that would go out and then pull through the ones that came back?
Yeah, so there'd be a bid spec for each thing that needs to be done, for the electrical, for the HVAC, for the plumbing, for the other fixtures, windows, door fixtures, those type things. Paving, getting the parking lot paved, all of that stuff.
And the city's doing the plumbing from the road to the building, is that right?
Yeah, we talked with Public Works Department. They're actually going to put in two water meters because that other side we're going to rent out. So we would, we're going to put in two water meters. And they're going to run the line from the road to the inside of the building for us.
How about HVAC systems? How many do you plan on having there? Just one big one or multiple small ones?
Well, I think that would be contingent on talking with the architect and the engineer, what would be the most beneficial for us and then giving us feedback based on what the demands of the building are going to be. So then he'll be able to say, well, this will be sufficient for what you all want to do. So that would be kind of my thought. When we had, we had people come out and kind of give us prices on stuff. Most of the people that we talked to from the HVAC side said basically those, it's, this is a brand, but those Abaci units, the little small ones where you just have a little wind unit that sits on the inside and then the compressor's on the outside, would be sufficient for that end unit, but we probably need somewhere around a three-ton unit for the rest of it.
A thirty-ton unit?
Three.
Okay, I thought, wow.
No, no, no.
What's the square footage in that building?
I'm not sure right offhand what the total square footage is. It's not, not a lot.
I think.
No, certainly.
I think the roof's on a thousand feet, right?
What's that?
Isn't the roof a thousand feet?
Yeah, so, yeah.
So thereabouts.
Yeah.
You know, if we're going to look at metering the water separately, wouldn't it be behoof of us to also look at metering power?
We, that'll be, that whole unit will be a whole separate unit. So utilities and everything will be separate from the other unit.
So then we're looking at least two HVAC systems?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I said, they're recommending the Abaci unit for the end. For us, it's a smaller, it's a smaller cost for installation as opposed to having a whole big unit. They have a name for them. It's a split something, I can't remember what the name is. And then just a traditional unit for the other side, which will have the offices and the meeting space in it.
I, I thought we were going to have two of those units available for startup businesses. Were we only going to have one unit for that?
No, we've always just had one, that end unit, and the other was going to be office and meeting space, the other two.
When you say end unit, you're talking about the.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's three bays. One bay will be for pop-up retail, commercial use. And then the other two will be meeting office space. And then the Welcome Center will be in where the office is.
Well, I certainly did miss that somewhere along.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I thought we were going to have two spaces available for startup businesses there.
No, it's always been just that one.
Okay.
So what do you need tonight? Is this approval of hiring Rickman for that thirty-five hundred dollars?
Yep.
Do we have a motion for that then?
I'll make a motion to do that, to hire Rickman to oversee the bids.
Okay, we got a motion. Do we have a second?
I say.
Motion to second, all in favor. All we need on that one, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
So it might be, we've been trying to schedule timing, timeframe for that. If it's possible to get it before Christmas, we might want to consider doing a special call meeting so we can get these bids out and then have them come in sometime in January for our January meeting. So we'll just play it by ear and I'll send out an email and kind of poll to see if we can do a special call from the, from the board. Because I don't want to, because if we wait till January, then it won't be until February till we look at all of them. It won't be until April or May before they actually start any work, so. So we'll look at that and see what the scheduling looks like. Just an update on the gateway directional signs. The biggest holdup on this project is we've been waiting for the city attorney. We have to do, we have to get wideaway acquisitions for the, because all of these signs are going on private property. So we're getting all the proper documentation and legal documents in place for us to be able to maintain access to that, once we do that. So the city attorney and his staff have been working on that since several months now. So we finally got to some finalization on that. Hopefully, we'll be working on those here by January at the latest. The sign company's ready to go. We just need to do, finish the due diligence on our part. And so it's not going to be a traditional right-of-way agreement or, or. I forgot the name now, it escaped my mind. Yes. Thank you. It's going to be, it's going to basically be a licensing agreement where we will have rights to the property. And then if for any reason either party can terminate with like three months' notice and we would have to find another location for the sign. But we felt like that was the best way and the least hurdles to get people to agree to allow us to put a sign on their property, so. Two of these locations are, well, one of them's residential property. One of them's Norfolk Southern. And two of them are on commercial property, so. So hopefully we'll have that, all the i's dotted and t's crossed. Dave and Mecklen and I emailed some last week, putting the final, you know, stamp of approval on the document. And then at that point, you know, we'd have to come to the city council for them to agree on, vote on it and all of that, so.
Do these rightaways come with a financial cost to the city?
No, we, the way we structured them, we're not, you know, if they do, most of the people we've already talked to about it, so they're fine. Some of them are, like, one of the properties is owned by Tom Large, so we've already talked to him about that. The other property is owned by the church there on South Carroll, right there next to the spa. One of them's Norfolk Southern sixty-one where you come in there and the other one is in the triangle where we put up all the stuff, political signs and all that. So they're pretty much, other than the church and the Tom Large property, most of it's stuff, places where we already put up a ton of stuff anyway, so. Though we don't anticipate any problems, but you never know until it starts, until it gets time to start signing documents.
And you were saying that the sign company will be ready to go once we finish crossing i's and dotting t's? Is that in, they'll be ready to go for production or install?
Yeah, well, there'll be production. They've sent the plans that we've let the city engineers looking at now to approve because they have that breakaway and all of that stuff and, you know. I mean, I know it's got to be there, but I don't know what it's supposed to look like. So he's looking at them now. We'll bring them back to you all, let you look at them one final time and then they'll be ready to actually manufacture them. They have sent, now the other part of it is the directional signs, which have to go to GDOT. So they're doing that part as well, so that approval has to go simultaneously with the other signs, so. Because everything we're putting would be on the DOT, GDOT right-of-way, so they'll have to approve all the signs that we put up on seventy-eight and sixty-one, so. It's not very easy. If it was all city streets, we'd be done with this thing a long time ago. You just got to do what you want, but it's been a lot, lot, lot of red tape. But once it gets, gets done, I mean, this is a project that's been, what, twenty-five years in the making? So I think people will be happy with it once we get it done. And then the other, only other thing, which is kind of new business and old business, is the, the appointment. We had one application from Brian Wright, White, which I think that Jerry, you and Bill know well, so I don't know if y'all want to shed any light or feedback or information.
He's really interested in wanting to be a member.
Okay.
He'll make us a good member. He, he's a local businessman, been in business here for probably eight, nine years now. He owns two businesses here in town. He and his, he and his family are rooted here pretty good. And so I, I certainly recommend that, that we, that we recommend to the city council at the earliest possible date to ratify him as a member.
The only question I have is on his application. He marked yes to having conflicts that would get in the way of this, you know, his participation in the board, but he didn't explain what. I don't know if he meant to put no on there, if he just forgot to put on there. Question says, do you have any employment or contractual relationship with the city that would create a continuing or frequently recurring conflict with regard to your participation on a board? And he marked yes on that. So I don't know if he has city contracts or something, or if he just messed up and meant to put no on there.
I don't, I don't know of anything like that.
Yeah. So maybe if we can just clarify that he just actually meant to say no on that or find out what he was meant on that.
Okay.
That's the only, just because, you know, they wouldn't ask that question if it didn't mean something, so. Other than that, he looks good to me.
Okay, so we had a motion from Bill. Do we need a second there?
I'll second it as long as that question doesn't get in the way of him being appointed. It's question eight.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're with the stipulation that they found out why he marked yes to possible conflict?
Yeah, well, that'll be fine. Yeah.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor. And Chris, you'll check into that then.
Yes, sir.
And this is going to be on for Thursday's work session, or is it too late?
Yeah, no, this won't be on until January.
Okay, moving on down to number six, new business. You've probably got the same question I do, but go ahead.
Okay, so I know you had indicated, Carl, that you would like to go to the training for the mayor's day, the required DDA training.
Yes, I have not been to training yet.
Okay, and then you also want to go on that?
No, I was going to do, there was, on a previous packet that we had received, there was a follow-up date. We talked about my term is a shortened term for this one. I'm filling a vacancy that's not a full term.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
No, we'll, we'll look at scheduling that next go-around.
Okay.
What was that date again?
January twentieth, it's a Saturday. It starts at eight fifteen, goes to four fourteen, it's in Atlanta.
Yeah. As long as I get signed up early because last time they were out of space.
That's what you're doing right now.
And has for the preparation at two hundred and sixty-five dollars to send him to training.
Alright, okay.
Do we need a motion for that?
So moved.
I've got a motion to send Mr. Carl to training to have a second.
Second.
All in favor. Okay, I've got one on our new business. On our December meeting, we usually don't have a meeting. We usually have a eat-out meeting. Is everybody in favor of that?
Suits me.
Alright. What dates are good? I got the fourteenth, I got something on the fourteenth, which is the second Thursday, I believe it is. What's good for you, Tracy?
I'm pretty much open.
Alright.
Yeah, my, my days are pretty open, my evenings are pretty open anyway.
If we could steer clear of the twenty-first or twenty-second?
Oh, you got a big little late problem. So we want to go the week of, I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Hey.
Uh, let's see, the tenth through the fifteenth, is that right? Or the eighteenth through the twenty-second, which is better?
I think the tenth through the fifteenth, sometime that week, yeah.
Okay, I got something on the fourteenth, so. I think Olive Tree can accommodate us, pretty sure they could, especially if we let them know pretty quick. Because they always work with us. They'll put us in a corner if they have to.
The twelfth is a Tuesday night.
Is the twelfth good for everybody?
Suits me.
Works for me.
Well, what about Monday, the eleventh?
Well, everything's closed on Monday, aren't they?
Olive Tree's.
Olive Tree open on Monday?
Yeah.
Monday, the eleventh works.
Alright, sounds good, everybody, Monday, the eleventh. Six-thirty, is that good? I will call Olive Tree in the morning, Monday, the eleventh, at six-thirty at Olive Tree. We tried Gabe one time, but you got to have somebody there and they don't take reservations and Olive Tree will work with us, so.
You just got to know the right people over there, so.
I thought I did. Alright, we'll move down to number seven, public comment. Sharon, you got anything? Alright, out of first future agenda.
Oh, I have one. I, I just wanted to give you all an update on some changes that are happening. Hold on, let me put this in my phone. Otherwise I'll forget and won't show up. We're doing some reorganization of DDA, Main Street Tourism and everything else. Today Janet Chumley, which some of y'all probably know, works, she worked in Parks and Rec. She officially came over today. She's the new Main Street manager for the city. And hopefully, once the budget passes on November the fifth, and it gets signed, it gets signed off for the tourism manager that will start sometime in 2018 to help alleviate all of this workload that we have going on and all these projects that we have. So just wanted to keep you all updated with that, those transitions. Another thing that we've put in the budget that will somewhat affect DDA is we're proposing, right now, there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in 2018 to do sidewalk improvements specifically for downtown. So hopefully we'll, that makes it through the budget process and we'll stay in there and we'll be doing some work from an aesthetic standpoint. And we're projected to keep that level for the next three years. So for the next three years, we'll have money to spend on much-needed improvements, on sidewalks, stuff like that in downtown.
Since you brought that up.
Sure.
We, we had a meeting with the city council several years ago, probably five, six years ago. And the, this was when we had a Main Street separate from the organization we have now. But the design committee came up with a design for sidewalks on certain streets downtown like Montgomery Street and Main Street would, would be a category where there were a lot of pavers involved. And the connecting sidewalks from Wilson Street and Church Street coming into those streets would be lined with pavers. And we started off with that parking lot over at the corner of Wilson Street in South Carroll. And if, if you look at that particular sidewalk, that was the first one that was done that way. And so the agreement was, and I'm not sure anybody at City Hall pays any attention to these, but that was the agreement, was to continue that. And if, if you look at the sidewalk that goes down through the railroad park, it's, it's a continuum of that. So I would like for us to try to maintain a semblance of planning and commitment to do what we set out to do rather than having a hodgepodge of just randomly done things.
Well, it won't be a hodgepodge by any means. And I'm not sure the plan you're talking about. From my perspective, you know, I don't, you have to balance aesthetics and functionality and maintenance. And I think that's what people miss out on, is when you get to the maintenance part of it and you don't have money to repair stuff. You know, quite frankly, I love the train park, but if that park isn't maintained or that sidewalk isn't maintained, I mean, you can already see that there's already some issues with that park now with the sidewalk. So, you know, I generally don't recommend something that isn't going to have longevity or doesn't fit functionally. Because sometimes you can get caught up in these aesthetics things and, and then it's some, you know, ten years from now it looks like crap because you have to continuously pump money into it. So we haven't come, we don't have a concrete plant. In my thought process, my thing would be just to continue the sidewalk that's at the amphitheater, that's around the amphitheater. So it's aesthetically, it's attractive, it's not just concrete, concrete, they're brick pavers. But it's easier to maintain, it's, if the bricks break, you can just pull one up, put another one back in.
Well, that is, that is what these are.
Well, see, up there, that's brick paver, continuous brick paver. So they start to sing, some of them, and they don't, they don't maintain their levelness. And then grass grows in between them. You can see that, if, I don't know if you, when you go out to get in your truck, you'll see what's around the amphitheater. But, I mean, at some point, we'll have a plan. We don't have the renderings or the plan or what all that's going to look like now. That will all come, you know, once the funding. I just wanted to make you all aware, to keep you in the loop with what's going on with that.
Well, I would prefer not to get into a situation like we did with the library. We had a commitment for the library at one time, too.
Right.
And all of a sudden, everybody forgot about it that was in a decision-making position.
I can't speak to the library. That, they had already broke ground by the time I got here.
I understand that, Chris, but, but things like this don't happen overnight.
Sure.
It is a progressive thing. And if, if you don't have a really, a good commitment by, by the city council and the mayor and the manager and everybody associated with it for a long-term plan, then it doesn't get done.
I certainly understand that.
And you understand that, sure. So I am just asking that we don't just all of a sudden come out of left field with something else that, that we try to maintain aesthetically, what looks good, but certainly it's got to be functional, but it needs to look good also. It's part of it.
I agree.
Okay.
Anything else for me?
Where'd we get to? Executive session? We talked to Miss Stacy. Miss Stacy, Chris said he didn't think we'd need her tonight, so we'll let her have the day off. And have a motion during the DDA part of the meeting.
Come on.
Alright, have a second? All in favor? You get the second, Tracy? You got a second?
You have to look at them.
Alright, we'll call the convention and visitor bureau meeting to order. It is six forty-three. Has everybody taken a chance to look over the meeting from that meeting? If so, do I have a motion? You have a little bit?
So moved, yeah.
I know where they got my all to you.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. Alright, we got a motion to approve the minutes, do you have a second?
I have a second.
Motion to second, all in favor? Alright, moving down to number three, financial report, Mr. Carl.
I just realized I printed out for the year instead of going back to when we started like I usually do. But since the beginning of the year, you'll see that we've actually had spit more than we've made. But we had some expenses we had to catch up on beginning of the year and had some that have come through recently. But we're still okay with money in the bank. I forgot to look to see what was in the bank account, but it's, it's fine right now. That's a technical accounting term, fine. And there's plenty of money in the bank. Now, one thing I have noticed, the collections, you know, the, we were supposed to be getting more from the city now. And our collections have not really reflected that. The past, like October's for deposit for September was fifty-eight hundred, or five thousand eight seventy-seven. The month before that was five thousand four twenty-nine and the month before that was four thousand nine seventy-six. So it's been like a steady right around five thousand to fifty-five hundred. So I haven't seen a jump yet with the extra percent. So, I haven't seen a jump yet, um, with the extra percentage we were supposed to get, I don't know, you know anything about that, Chris?
Yeah, the city noticed that as well, um, we've actually, um, have a proposal from Georgia Municipal Association. They come and do a hotel motel audit, um, so, quite. We think some hotels are doing what they're supposed to be doing and some are not, this is the best way to put it. So, GMA's been very, very, uh, successful in going and doing these audits. And actually recuperating back funds from hotels that haven't been paying. Um, but we don't think that the collection is correct from a city side or what's getting sent to the DDA. So, um, we'll keep you updated, I was gonna talk about that, um, in the, um, new business. But, um, we, we feel like that will change tremendously once we get that process done. Course, we also haven't received any new, we haven't received, started receiving money from the new hotel yet either, so that'd change a lot, too. And they've been sold out several nights since they've been open, too, so.
We should see a big jump from that.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
And that should start in, I guess, October, the next check.
Yeah, the next check, we should probably start seeing that money coming in.
This, this only shows, um, through September's taxes, we haven't received the October check yet.
Where's that on the?
That's all up in the income part, um, it's that total of forty-nine thousand eight forty. Um, I've got the detail here, I didn't print out, but everybody.
I, I just didn't see it on my sheet, that's what I was looking for.
Yeah, that's what the forty-nine thousand is, the colle-, that's the collections this year. So, that represents, uh, ten months, December of last year through September of this year.
Any questions from Carl? If not, we'll move on down to number four, tourism. Any old business?
Tracy, what does that mean, by the way?
Have you had that on there still?
Oh, I thought you put, I don't remember that on there. Yeah, I was just, I don't think, you know, I just leave it on there, it's always on there, I didn't know what that meant.
Alright, we'll move down to old business then. Move on down one more, new business, you said you had something, Chris?
Well, I was gonna talk about the, the audit, but you, I've already talked about it, yeah.
I stole your thunder.
No, that's fine, I mean, I just wanted to make sure we were aware and, and I'll let you all know, you know, what direction the city goes in on that. But, um, I feel pretty confident the city manager is, um, is pushing it pretty hard, I mean, he wants to do it, so.
How many motels do we have here that are subject to that now?
We're up to seven now, seven. We have one that is technically a hotel, but is operated as, not as an hotel, and they're not paying hotel motel tax at all, so.
But, the extended stay hotel?
Yeah.
How do, how does that get out of it?
It doesn't.
Oh, they just choose to get out of it?
Yeah.
If we go through with this audit, they may have a big tax bill coming their way?
They probably are not gonna be very happy.
I wondered.
They're, they're on the list that we submitted, so.
Yeah, now, we have only one of those?
Yes, sir.
Is that the one downtown here?
Yes.
We actually have two, don't we?
Well, yeah, there's one out on, on, by the bypass.
Yeah, then there's.
But, they're, 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 alright, and then there's one downtown.
Oh, that's not alright?
Right.
Likely, likely.
Likely, yeah.
Gotcha. Yeah.
Yeah, even though it'd be on the recording, we didn't name names, we didn't name names.
Alright, moving on down to.
However, everybody knew what we was talking about, cause they're the ones that said, not me.
Alright, any public comment? Item for future agenda? No executive session, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Sounds good to me.
Got a motion from Bill, we have a second?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, looks like everybody got it.
That was a pretty good meeting.
Yes, sir.